Yeah, we'll see it. Okay, good evening. I will call this June 18th Council meeting to order. All those members that are here this evening have checked in. Thank you for being here with Alderperson Kirkpatrick not in attendance. Thank you all for being here as well that are joining us in person and those that are joining us via River Cities Community Access. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the Silent Prayer in Louvre invocation. Everyone please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda, number four, the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there any discussion on those minutes from the previous meeting? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve. Place on file.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Move into a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes. Next item on the agenda is the explanation of the visitor speaking procedure. Those wishing to address the body here this night, tonight, will be allowed five minutes to do so on an agenda item which is appearing in front of all of us. You have to hit the push button on the microphone so you're able to be picked up up here and for those watching at home. The next item on our agenda is number six under New Business, a resolution naming September 8th as International Migratory Bird Day at the city of Wisconsin Rapids. See attachment number one. And that's all attached here this evening. We do have a few individuals wishing to address the body on this request. Those individuals wish to come to the podium. And please introduce yourself and your address.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to present this today to you. My name is Sharon Schwab. I'm a member of the Wisconsin Rapids League of Women Voters of the Wisconsin Rapids area, member of the Clean, Green, and Welcoming Community, and also am chairman of the Portage County Town of Grant where the largest grassland complex east of the Mississippi lies, the Buena Vista Wildlife Area. We're here today to present an idea that has been, has been embraced by 66 cities across the state of Wisconsin, and we're welcome to bring this to you today to Wisconsin Rapids. Wisconsin Rapids is uniquely situated and has an enormous opportunity here for bird life and those interested in birding in general. Between the Buena Vista Wildlife Area and Laola Wildlife Area and Adams County, which are grassland areas, and the Paul J. Olson Wildlife Area and the Mead Wildlife Area, which are primarily wetland areas, and the Wisconsin River running through Wisconsin Rapids, which a rich community here of interested citizens who bird in their own backyards, who find birding not only as a sporting event, as a recreational event, we invite you this evening to share the, I share the podium here with Mary Dom to discuss the resolution and to talk about the benefits. Much like Tree City designation, which you already have, we'd like to, again, raise the prestige, the level of the, the prestige level of the municipality by considering to become Bird City, advertise these bird-friendly areas which you have so close to your core, and designate and encourage avian conservation within the municipality itself.
And my name is Mary Dom, 5761 Honeysuckle Court, Wisconsin Rapids. I'm also a member of the Bird City Committee, which is part of Citizens for Clean, Green, and Welcoming Community, as well as the League of Women Voters Wisconsin Rapids area. We took this on as a project this year because it fits into the mission of the Citizens for Clean, Green, and as Sharon explained, it would certainly add to the prestige of the community, which is already heavily involved in birding activities. The Bird City idea started in 2010, and it's only been three years and 66 Wisconsin cities have now won the designation. In order to become a Bird City, you have to meet seven out of 22 criteria, and I would like to thank the mayor and his staff for helping us review the criteria and going over some of the documentation that we needed to meet our seven criteria. The last criteria is the resolution, which was part of your packet, International Migratory Bird Day Resolution, and as a committee, we decided that September 8th would be our International Migratory Bird Day because it coincides with the grand affair, and it would be a good opportunity to present, to have the mayor presented with the award, the Bird City designation. You get a city, a flag, a plaque, a lot of publicity, and city signs, two of them coming into the city. I think Tree City is, also has those kinds of plaques, but we would get two that would, could be put up showing that we have earned that designation. Thank you.
Anything further from, from you? Then we'll open it up for questions from the council members. I'll make a comment. First of all, thank you for, for kind of taking the lead on this and bringing it to our attention. In light of the recent conversation and controversy regarding our dealings with the migratory Canadian geese, I think it's important for us to point out that this has no sort of connection in relationship to that. We do indicate in the resolution calling out specifically migratory songbirds and other species, not necessarily anything to do with the geese population. So I just want to make that clarification if you have a comment on that. I know that was something that we had discussed, that there really is no sort of contradiction related to that, correct?
That's correct. I think many cities face the same problem. A place like Stevens Point, they do control the goose population quite successfully. Green Bay, there are others that have this designation that do, do deal with a geese problem that they oft have within their boundaries.
Very good. Council members, I'll open up questions. Any discussion on the request before you this evening? Any discussion? Okay. Well, with that, I guess I would entertain a motion. We're gonna do, we're gonna do a voice, run the rest of the meeting with the voice if you don't mind. It's easier since you can't see what you're doing anyways. Okay. Alderperson Hoekamp made a motion to approve the resolution naming September 8th as an international migratory bird day, the city, in the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes. Thank you for being here and look forward to seeing you on September 8th. Next item under New Business, a resolution adopting the Wisconsin DNR Compliance Maintenance Annual Report as approved by the Wastewater Treatment Commission in item number two of the June 5th report. See attachment number two. Mr. Nitzel, did you want to speak to that resolution? Is there any reason to speak to it? The, see, the question being asked is if the report is attached? It is attached, okay. Resolution I see is there, is the report as well? All right. Shane said the report is underneath the Wastewater Treatment Commission piece, probably towards the end of the agenda, I would assume, or the packet. Oh, right behind the previous minutes for clarification. Okay. Yep, so we've got the report and the, and the resolution here. Do you need to speak to it or wish to speak to it?
Well, I just want to explain that this is a requirement of the DNR, and I think most of the Alderpersons know this. It's just to ensure that the commissions and city council members understand how the treatment plant's being run and what kind of grade they get after they go through this. So every, it's, it's more of a, can't think of the, it just gives clarity to the whole operation so everybody knows what's going on, and the DNR wants to make sure that the people that are running the show know what's going on. We did have one B, the rest were all As on the back page, but that, that's being dealt with. We're having some problems with it, some testing, and the DNR is aware of that.
All right, thank you. Any questions for wastewater superintendent?
Yeah. So this is the annual thing, so we're just, we're the same as we have been every year, basically. It's not any worse, not any better.
Right. Well, it was worse, and that drove us into an expansion some years back.
Well, yeah, yeah, okay.
But every, every, every treatment plant throughout the state has to do this, so.
Well, and actually, I think you're being modest, Jim, because really, you do have overall 3.69. I mean, I'd be really happy with that rating.
It was better than my high school average, that's for sure.
Well, I was gonna go there, but thank you for, so really, it was just one B and it was all As, so thank you. You're doing a great job.
Well, thank you.
Somebody is, so.
Thank you.
Well, he's his own department now. He's a, he's a big guy now, all right. Any further discussion on the resolution in front of you this evening? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll also move.
We have a motion. Is there a second? A second? Move into a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes. Next item on our agenda, item number seven, the Standing Council Committee Reports. Item A, the Finance and Property Meeting Held June 3rd. Alderperson Young.
Thank you. And as you've already welcomed everyone here this evening and everyone at home, the Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Thursday, June 13th, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present except Alderman Kirkpatrick, who was excused. Alderman Raoul sat in for Alderman Whirl. Alderpersons Nash and Stack were also present for the joint agenda items with the Human Resource Committee. So for this part, I'm gonna turn it over to Alderperson Nash, who will read our joint minutes, and then I'll pipe in later.
I guess she yielded to you.
Yeah. Go ahead. The Human Resources Committee met at 5:00 PM on Thursday, June 13th, 2003. All members were present except Alderperson Whirl. Alderperson Raoul sat in for Alderperson Whirl. Alderperson Young was also present for the joint agenda items with the Finance Committee. Human Resources Committee met jointly with the Finance and Property Committee for the first five items. Item number one was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item two, consider a request from the assessor to either hire a temporary data entry clerk or contract with Bauer, Bauer, Balmar. Appraisal to provide data entry assistance for the purposes of inputting revaluation data. Motion was made and seconded to approve increasing the contract with Balmar appraisal by $5,000 for the purpose of obtaining that additional assistance with the data entry in the motion carried. Item number three was a request, was consider a request from the mayor for a stipend for a part-time communication slash social media intern. Motion was made and seconded to provide a stipend not to exceed $2,500 for a temporary part-time communication slash social media intern reporting to the mayor, and that motion carried. Item number four was consider a request for an annual stipend for DPW relief supervisors who are on call. Motion was made and seconded to provide a stipend of $20 per day to DPW relief supervisors who are on call, and motion carried, and that's just when they're on call on that weekend, which isn't every weekend. Item five, discuss health insurance plan design options, including an HSA option and premium contribution levels for July 1st, 2013 renewal, and consider a staff recommendation. Motion was made and seconded to approve staff recommendations regarding plan design and options, premiums, and city premium and HSA contributions as attached. Effective January 1st, 2014, to renew with ING for the city's stop-loss insurance with a $75,000 stop-loss limit for the plan year July 1st, 2013 to June 30th, 2014, as attached, and to renew with security administration or administrative services for claims administration for the plan year July 1st, 2013 to June 30th, 2014, as attached, and that motion carried.
Okay. So then the Finance and Property Committee continued to meet in council chambers for the remainder of our agenda. Item six was a request from the Hotel Mead 451 East Grand Avenue for a one-day premises extension for their Class B liquor and beer license to include their parking lot for an event on June 21st from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM. It was moved and seconded to approve that request. Item seven was to hold a non-renewal hearing for a Class B liquor and beer license. The non-renewal hearing was not necessary. It was moved and seconded to renew the license for no, no name yet LLC Freddie's Pub and Eatery, and that motion carried. Item eight, a request to suspend the open container ordinance and close the following streets on July 4th from 12:00 noon to 11:00 PM. I have a number of them, so just follow along. Second Street South between East Grand and Mead, the Grand Avenue Bridge, West Grand Avenue between Grand Avenue Bridge and Third Avenue, East Grand Avenue between Grand Avenue Bridge and Third Street, Second Street between East Grand Avenue and East Jackson Street, Oak Street between Second Street and the alley, all other east-west streets from Oak Street to Mead Street between Second Street and Third Street, which are as follows: Mead Street, Locust Street, Pine, Walnut, Maple, and Birch; Second Avenue between one-half block north of West Grand Avenue and Johnson Street; Johnson Street between just west of Second Avenue South and Third Avenue South; First Avenue South between Chase and Third Avenue South; and Chase between First Avenue South and Third Avenue. Closing the following streets, beginning at 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, for a safety zone, and the safety zone includes First Avenue South between West Grand Avenue and Chase, Goggins between First Avenue and Third Avenue, Johnson between First Avenue and just west of Second Avenue, Second Avenue between Johnson Street and about 100 feet from the north of Johnson Street. It was moved and seconded, seconded to approve the street closures and open container ordinance suspension, and that motion carried. Item nine was the motion to adjourn, and the meeting ended at 6:15 PM. With that, I'd make a motion to approve these minutes.
Yeah, your first report as well. Did you read the?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did. Okay, that's what threw you. I'm sorry. I thought we were going right to the other one. So, okay. So let's go back to report one, which I'm having a hard time finding because I'm at Public Works. Okay, got it? Thank you. Finance and Property Committee also met at 5:00 PM on Monday, June 3rd, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. List of other people in attendance is on file in the clerk's office. Item one, the meeting was called to order. Item two, there were no special beer license applications. Item three, an application for a Class B liquor and beer license filed by Sunrise Bar LLC, DBA Sunrise Bar for premises located at 2356 Street South. It was moved and seconded to approve the application, the motion carried. Item four, a request from Tom Schneider, Wisconsin Rapids Rotary Club Sunrise for approval of a special events application for July 20th, the 5K Rotary Fund Run Walk for Life from 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM to include a run-walk route. It was moved and seconded to approve that application, and the motion carried. Item five, a request from Lisa Wellink, Kiwanis Club of Wisconsin Rapids, Inc., for approval of a special events application for August 3rd for Kick Start Your Heart Kick Ball Tournament from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM to include a special beer license for the Two Diamonds on the east side of Mead Field along 14th Avenue South and Vending. It was moved and seconded to approve that application, and the motion carried. Item six, a request from Mary Lou Hamilton, Christian Life Fellowship, for approval of a special events application for June 30th from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Robinson Park to include vending, and again, that was moved and seconded to approve, and the motion carried. Item seven, a resolution granting authority to the Water Works and Lighting Commission to deposit daily receipts. It was moved and seconded to approve that request, and the motion carried. And I am missing, somehow I have bills and revenues. I, I don't have the end of the report. Does somebody? Well, it's not on the back. Sure, I guess I should probably finish reading the actual report. No, that's one I already read. So do we, okay, so this is the issue. I don't have the first report. Nope, I'll get there. There we go. No, that wasn't all of it either. I'm just looking at where it stopped. Okay, so we did item seven, and a resolution is included with item seven, which is attached, if you can find the attachment. Item eight, a request from Street Superintendent Jim Borski that the city create an ordinance to ban feeding waterfall. Irony. The committee is looking for input from residents regarding a feeding ban. No action was taken. Item nine, I'm back in my element here, folks. Item nine A is new beverage operator license applications. You'll see them attached. It was moved and seconded to approve, and that motion passed. Item B is renewals. It was moved and seconded to approve the following renewals. That motion carried. You see them attached. Item C, there were no applications recommended denied by the police department. Item 10 was to hold a non-renewal hearing of a Class B liquor and beer license. A discussion was held regarding that for Arthur James Ventures LLC Class B liquor and beer license. In lieu of a hearing, it was moved and seconded as follows. Approve extending the time to December 31st, 2013, within which Arthur James Ventures LLC has to commence operating a business under its licenses. However, within that time, if a bona fide application is made by another applicant for the same type of a license, and no such license is available in the city, that individual shall immediately surrender its license to the city. In the event, no such application by a third party is made, that individual shall be automatically revoked on December 31st, 2013, if a business using the licenses is not operating from the premises by that date. So I know that's kind of a lot of words, so I'd be happy to explain that. And then secondly, approve the renewal of the license subject to the conditions, conditions as stated above, which Daniel Retzloff, agent for Arthur James Ventures LLC, has agreed to. So it was moved, seconded, and that motion carried. So 11 was final review of the 2013-14 liquor beer license, like, excuse me, liquor beer wine licenses, moved and seconded to approve those. Those licenses not current, with all licenses contingent upon licenses, bringing current any outstanding issues such as delinquent taxes or liquor bills by June 18th, 2013. Those licensees not current by that date will be denied on that date. Motion carried. So in other words, they're all approved contingent on paying the tax bills. And then the applicants are all listed. Item 12 was audit of the bills. It was moved and seconded to approve paying the bills. That motion carried. Item 13, review the referral list. No additional items. And then item 14 was a motion and a second, and motion carried to adjourn at 6:13 PM. Okay. Yeah, that was, no problem with that. So with that, both of those minutes, I'd make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve both the Finance and Property Committee meetings held, June 3rd and June 13th. Is there a second? We have a second.
Oh, thank God.
Any further discussion on those two reports? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor signify by, Alderperson Nash?
Just on the last item there, everybody was all current and everything, so we're not, nobody's gonna be denied?
Well, that would be, I, I'm not sure. Shane?
Because tonight, tonight is the deadline, right?
Normally in the past, we've waited until the final day, till the end of month, June 30th, so.
Yeah, but.
There's still one delinquent.
Well, that's what I mean, the minutes read, that if it's not.
Well, yeah, because how do we approve it if it's not?
Not up tonight.
Because the motion was clearly if it's not paid.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yep, you're right.
So there's, yeah.
So we have, we have one, and the action, one on the delinquency, but on the liquor bill side.
Can we amend it to include by June 30th?
All right, then I would agree. I mean, that's what we need to do then, right?
Oh, let's do that.
All right. Alderperson Young, do you want to amend your motion?
Absolutely. I'll amend it.
An amendment to June 30th?
Yep, June 30th. That's fine.
Alderperson Whirl, wanna include your second? Okay. Any further discussion on that motion?
I do though, so Shane, you're gonna follow on that?
Yeah, what we do is we send them a letter telling them that they have this outstanding they, they need to take care of before they can pick up their license. And they always, yep, and they always have in the past.
Those they can't serve.
Yeah, exactly. The incentive is there.
You'd hope. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next item on our agenda, under number seven, is item B, the Public Works Committee meeting held June 2nd and June 18th.
June 4th, I think, at least is what I have for the first meeting, but anyway, we can double-check that.
That's my fault.
Public Works had two meetings. Second one was this evening. I'll start with the first one. Public Works Committee met at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, June 4th, 2013, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Mayor Verwink, Dave Laspen, Joe Weichstedt. The list of others present is on file in the clerk's office. Item one was called meeting order. Item two, request from Ralph Hamel to use non-truck route streets to access RCH during the reconstruction of First Street North and the construction of the roundabout at the courthouse from New Page and Correnzel. Ralph, Ralph Hamel was present for this item. Truck traffic from New Page accesses the RCH complex by way of Jackson Street at First Street North. During the reconstruction of First Street, this route will not be available for four months in 2013 and three months in 2014. There was a motion and second to allow trucks accessing the RCH complex to use Baker Street in 2013 and 2014 during the First Street reconstruction. The motion carried. Item three, consider changing the pavement marking on Grand Avenue Bridge to the two lane, to two through lanes with two bicycle lanes. The Grand Avenue Bridge is presently marked with three traffic lanes. There are five-foot wide sidewalks on each side of the bridge for bicycle and pedestrian traffic. It is difficult for bicycles to pass pedestrians on the sidewalks. The proposal is to remove the existing pavement markings and remark the travel lanes on the bridge. There'd be two 12-foot wide lanes with two, six-foot wide painted bicycle lanes. There's a motion and second to approve changing the pavement marking on the Grand Avenue Bridge to two through lanes with two bicycle lanes, and that motion carried. Item four, review and recommend approval of payments for acquisition of right-of-way, permanent limited easements, and temporary limited easements for the First Street Reconstruction Project for parcel number 21, tax ID 34-05505, located at 80 Oliver Street, for the relocation of the parking area with a parking lot with a blacktop surface. This proposal was sent back at the May 21st council meeting because the municipal code requires a blacktop or concrete surface on parking lots. Therefore, the parking areas are proposed to be paved with blacktop. Estimated cost is now $15,758. There was a motion and second to approve the relocation. There was a motion, a second, to approve the relocation of the parking area with a blacktop surface. That motion carried. Item five, request to approve amendment number seven to the Wisconsin DOT ID 6999-09-09, First Street Roundabout Project, to include costs of extending the contract in 2014. The amendment increases the contract cost by $5,547.96, of which the Wisconsin DOT will fund 80%, which is $4,438.37. And cost to the City of Wisconsin Rapids would be 20%, which is $1,109.52. Dan Ruseter of ACOM was present for this item. There was a motion, a second, to approve amendment number seven, the First Street Roundabout Project. That motion carried. Item number six, a request to approve amendment number three to the Wisconsin DOT ID 6999-11-02, the East River Bank Multi-Use Trail from East Jackson Street to Oliver Street, to include costs of Oliver Street parking and extending the contract into 2014. The amendment increases the contract cost by $1,619, which the Wisconsin DOT will pay, fund 80%, which is $1,295.20. And cost to the City of Wisconsin Rapids would be 20%, which is $363.80. Dan Ruseter, again, of ACOM, was present for this item. There was a motion, a second, to approve item, to approve amendment number three, the East River Bank Multi-Use Trail. That motion carried. Item seven, remove the permit parking in the city-owned parking area lying between Third Avenue, First Avenue, Johnson Street, and Goggan Street, the West Side Market Square Lot, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. City of Wisconsin Rapids must replace all its traffic signs that do not meet the present reflectivity standards by June of 2014. Therefore, it is cost-effective to remove any signs that are no longer needed. There have not been any permits that have been taken out in a number of years. There was a motion, a second, to remove permit parking in the city-owned parking area lying between Third Avenue, First Avenue, Johnson Street, and Goggan Street. That motion carried. And that's attachment number one in our minutes. Item number eight, new school zones and crossing due to signing plan. Updates at the following locations. A, Clyde Avenue from Lincoln Street to 140 feet east of Lincoln Street. B, Seventh Street South from Two Mile Avenue to 140 feet south of Two Mile Avenue. Engineering and Street Departments have been meeting to remove unneeded signs and to standardize school zones and crossings. These changes are for the Grove, Woodside, St. Vincent, St. Mary's, and Washington schools. There was a motion, a second, to approve the new school zones. That motion carried. That's attachment number two in our packet. Item nine, to remove the school zones due to signing plan. Updates at the following locations. A, school zones. One, Cook Avenue from 300 feet east of Lincoln Street to 600 feet west of Eighth Street South. Or two, 12th Avenue South from 100 feet north of Chase Street to Chase Street. Three, 32nd Street North from 300 feet south of Franklin Street to 300 feet north of Franklin Street. B, school crossing with a school zone. One, First Avenue South at its intersection with Second Avenue South. Two, Second Avenue South at its intersection with 10th Avenue South. Three, Sixth Street at its intersection with Oak Street. Four, Eighth Street South at its intersection with Two Mile Avenue. Five, 32nd Street North at its intersection with Franklin Street. Six, Chase Street at its intersection with 12th Avenue South. Seven, Chase Street at its intersection with the Riverview Expressway. Eight, Chestnut Street at its intersection with Eighth Street South. There was a motion, a second, to approve removing the school zones and school crossings. The motion carried. That's attachment number two also. Item number 10, to amend the school zones due to signing plan. Updates at the following locations. A, Chestnut Street from 200 feet to 140 feet west of 11th Street South. Two, 200 feet to 140 feet east of 13th Street South. B, Dewey Street from 140 feet west of 12th Street South to 13th Street South. C, East G Street from 100 to 140 feet west of 12th Street South to 12th Street South. D, East G Street from 13th Street South to 100 feet to 140 feet east of 13th Street South. E, Grove Avenue from 600 feet west of Lincoln Street. That's taken out. Be 20 feet east of Sapsin Street, too. It's, would go to 140 feet east of Lincoln Street. F, Lincoln Street from be 40 feet north of Clyde Avenue, too. 140 feet south of Grove Avenue. G, 10th Avenue South from 75 feet south of Gardner Street, too. Then becomes 50 feet north of Second Avenue South. H, 12th Street South from, be 140 feet north of Chestnut Street, too. Becoming 140 feet south of Dewey Street. I, 13th Street South from 140 feet north of Chestnut Street, to 140 feet south of Dewey Street. J, Two Mile Avenue from be 40 feet east of Lincoln Street, too. Becoming 140 feet west of Eighth Street South. K, Washington Street from, coming 200 feet west of 28th Street North, to 980 feet west of 32nd Street. There is a motion, a second, by Holcamp, to approve amending the school zones. The motion carried. Item 11, to review the proposed 2013 Public Works Project schedule. Any reviewed the schedule? Item 12, to review the referral list. Items number one of 2013 and item number five of 2013 to be removed. Item 13, motion, a second, to adjourn. That motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 6:48 p.m. With that, then we had a meeting this evening, which is item number two.
I have that one.
Reported to the council on June 18th, which is this evening. Public Works Committee met at 5:30 p.m. on Tuesday, June 18th, 2013, in the first floor conference room in City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Mayor Verwink, Dave Laspe, Lance Flimmel, and Doug Pazinoff. Item number one, called the meeting to order. Item number two, a resolution to grant the Wood County Highway Commission the power to act as the lead agency for the Wisconsin DOT 2014 to 2015 STP freight application to construct the East Side bypass from County Trunk Highway W to County Trunk Highway Z. Wisconsin DOT has new street construction fund entitled 2014 to 2015 STP freight. This is funded by the state at 80% with a local share of 20%. Wood County Highway Commission is proposing to fund the 20 local share. In that, the East Side bypass is mostly in the City of Wisconsin Rapids. The city will have to grant Wood County the power to act as the lead agency to make the application to fund the construction of the East Side bypass. There was a motion, a second, to approve a resolution to grant the Wood County Highway Commission the power to act as the lead agency for the Wisconsin DOT 2014-2015 STP freight application to construct the East Side bypass from County Trunk Highway W to County Trunk Highway Z. That motion carried. Item number three, there was a motion, a second, to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 5:48 p.m. With that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the two committee reports.
We have a motion and a second to approve the two committee reports here presented to us tonight, and I'll open that up for discussion. I'll make two comments on the first committee report, and that was the alternative modes of transportation, the bike path that'll be extended up behind the foundry related to the First Street project and the bike lanes on the bridge. So, I appreciate the committee taking the time to give some attention to those alternative modes of transportation and pleased to see those pieces were approved at your committee. And then, the other item is related to the item of business on tonight's Public Works Committee, and that was the East Side bypass. And for those, many of us here this evening, it's a new piece of information that we received. Obviously, we had to move quickly to get the committee together to meet, and we've got Doug Pazinoff from Wood County Highway Department here as well to address any questions. The committee minutes reflect essentially everything. It's allowing us to submit to the county to act as a lead agent, to apply for an STP urban freight application for the completion of a four-lane bypass, which we have to submit by June 28th. We should know early fall, hopefully, what our status is of the application. Kind of a random opportunity, and I think it presents a tremendous opportunity for development and obviously moving a lot of the truck and through traffic off of Eighth Street, all at a cost of 20% at local share, which is kind of enticing, I think. So, Doug, did you want to speak to the body or address any concerns? I guess I'd open up to the council if they have any questions for Doug.
I think it's a great opportunity to move forward, and I know the problems on Eighth Street. I think this would take a lot of traffic off of Eighth Street and move forward in the right direction. As the mayor said, he, it is a fast-moving, it's a fast-forward moving program. The application has to be in by the 28th. And with that being said, construction within the, it has to be started within three years. So, with that, I'll take any questions if anybody has anything.
Actually, I do.
Alder Person Young?
So, when we talk 20%, is that 20% who's...
Great question. So, we're giving, we're deferring to the county to apply.
Right.
We're deferring the county to kind of pick up the tab, so...
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah. Good question. Mm-hmm. Alder Person, Holcamp?
I think they said that would be probably about a million dollars, just this 20%.
Yeah, the project from, the first phase from 54 to Highway 13 will be, cost somewhere between eight and 10 million dollars. I don't have a real firm number on that, but yeah, the buy-in by the county would be about a million bucks if you did it that way.
Obviously, it's an application. There's no certainties, but we're told by the state and the DOT that there's a lot of favorable feelings on in the application, given the fact that the feasibility studies have been done, a lot of legwork's been done over the course of many decades to bring us to this point. Now, it's the time for us to really take the action step and go after the opportunity that's presented. I'd say that based on the public works conversation as well, that there's a lot of questions yet to be determined. One of the pieces that I'll take the lead on is getting the municipal, regional municipal leaders together to have a conversation about what this means for all the towns. The Village of Port Edwards has verbally stated that they're behind this. Obviously, they have an interest. There's been conversations about a bypass long-term, but this would be the Highway 54 bypass between 54 and W and Highway 13 is where this piece would end. So, it's the first phase of that two-stage kind of proposal initially.
Yeah, that's correct.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just a quick comment here, and I'm in favor of the project. As has been mentioned, this has been talked about for a number of years, and that's why the, you know, legwork has been done. I don't know if all the rest of the council was provided a map. You may remember in years past of what it was, but we did have a new map this evening that was presented. So, to ask Shane if you could get this to the rest of the council members to look at again through, so they can review what's been talked about over the years. It's a project that as we'd ever, when we ever talked about it, was 20 years and 25 years down the road. So, this is a unique opportunity that has come along to try and get the funding to do this soon and very soon if we, if the county succeeds in the application, so.
Yeah, most of the criteria in the application matches up with what we're trying to do, to move freight from one end to the other. I'm pretty excited about it, I guess.
Yeah, and on that note, it allows the business community to get their freight through the city or around the city in this case, as opposed to having to take the commercial route of Eighth Street.
Yep.
Obviously, it creates, hopefully, safety factor is important to us, but also to move that through traffic that wouldn't otherwise be using the businesses along that corridor, off the corridor as well. Any further discussion or questions on the motion here to approve the two reports as presented this evening? I'd also add, it's been an interesting conversation over the last couple of months, just even on the collaboration potential with the county on this. Overall, county realizes the value overall, not only in the Wisconsin Rapids area, but obviously happens to be right here, so. Add that. Thank you for being here. With that, I'll open up. Any further questions? Move into a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes. The next item on our agenda is item C, the Human Resources Meeting held June 13th, which the remaining, I guess, remainder of the first meeting.
So, the remainder of the Human Resources Committee meeting is item six, a request to fill a relief operator/technician assistant position in the wastewater department due to retirement. Motion was made, a second, to approve a request to fill a relief operator/technical assistant in the wastewater department. Motion carried. Item number seven, a request to fill a full-time residential inspector position in the planning and economic development due to retirement. Motion was made, a second, to approve filling that position. Item eight, a request to hire a one-quarter-time commercial plumbing inspector in planning and economic development due to retirement. And motion, there was a motion made, a second, to approve that. Item number nine, a request to temporarily contract out for residential, commercial plumbing and commercial building inspections. Motion was made, a second, to approve temporarily contracting out for residential, commercial plumbing and commercial building inspection services upon rates and terms favorable to the city as determined by the Planning and Economic Development Director. The motion carried. Item number 10, A, in open session, motion was made, a seconded to go into closed session. Item B, or B, in closed session, the committee discussed a request for additional compensation from a non-union employee. C, a motion was made, a second, to return to open session. That motion carried, and no action was necessary regarding 10B. Item 11, a motion was made, a second, to adjourn. Motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 6:50 p.m., and I'll move for approval of the report.
We have a motion and a second to approve the report. Remaining Human Resources Committee meeting report held June 13th. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Next item on our agenda is item number eight, the miscellaneous reports. Item A, the City Treasurer's monthly report for April. Item B, the Southwood County Airport Commission meeting held May 2nd. Item C, the Park and Recreation Commission meeting held April 24th and May 29th. Item D, the Ethics Board held May 9th. Item E, the Water Works and Lighting Commission held April 30th, their special meeting. May 8th, the Finance Committee meeting, and May 8th, their regular committee meeting. Item F, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department monthly summary for May. Item G, the May report for the Police Department. Item H, the Police and Fire Commission meeting held May 8th. Item I, the balance of the report of wastewater, held June 5th. There's two I's on here. I will assume that's item J, the City Treasurer's report on investments for May. And item K, the Airport Commission report held, committee, I'm sorry, meeting held We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion, a second, to approve and place those on file. Any discussion on those reports? Alder Person Nash?
Thank you. Just on police, the Police Department, if I can find it quick here. I have it. Gee. Maybe I, where the heck is it? Anyway, had to do with Scruggs investigation. That makes sense? Okay, that's, that wasn't, that hasn't been on in the last couple of months, has it? Or is that new?
I think I started adding that.
Oh, all right. Shows you how much I pay attention. But I'm, that's like a cold case, whatever, and with the technology now, maybe we can help some people out, whatever with, oh, yeah, here it is. And then, the Fire Department, with the runs, are they down? Is that the way I read that? The ambulance runs?
Yes, we're down a little bit on 911s, just barely, but we're down on interfacilities.
Right, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Any further, Alder Person Young?
Well, let me just focus, stick in the cage. Park and Rec, item five. So, what is the update on the Riverbank? Where are we with that, Jim? Because I'm still getting questions on it. I mean, I can read what it says, but I'm just wondering, this doesn't give a full story? Are people happy? Are we still having issues?
I think nobody's really mad anymore.
Okay, well, that's... Okay, well, that's good.
We found a hap, well, not a happy, but we found a medium. They're satisfied, I think, at this point, and I think, I think the commissioners are going to take a look at the existing condition and see if that's something everybody can live with. I don't think we're ever going to get total satisfaction out of either side, but we're somewhere in the middle.
And I just want to comment that I think it really is a good idea that we come up with a standard policy for how we handle these issues, because I think everyone's been put kind of in an awkward position, and there's nobody completely right, and there's nobody completely wrong, and everybody's just, you know, trying to make it work. So, I appreciate that, Jim, thank you.
I think in alignment with that, too, just a general Riverbank condition piece. I know there's been a lot of conversations about the condition of the river wall in a lot of areas, and it might be worthwhile to have that as an agenda item in a couple of months out, maybe to, to take a real concerted look at it from city limits to city limits as we look there. I would also add, the Airport Commission was able to finish and conduct its business this month. We had a full quorum. Everyone stayed for the meeting. Nobody got too heated, and there's going to be a discussion regarding the airport layout plan. We're also going to a timber sale of all the airport property. We're going to be cutting a lot of the timber. So, if anyone has questions, that's obviously in a number of your districts. The decision has been made to clear-cut a lot of that area, and so we may have some concerns, but it's coming from the FAA and the Bureau of Aeronautics that we must do it, so I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody might have on those. And there's also an airport event happening this fall. It's 85th anniversary of the airport, and that's being held over Labor Day weekend. They're bringing a Ford trimotor to celebrate the weekend and, obviously, try to highlight the, kind of the economic success of the community at the time as well, so. Any further questions or discussion on the reports presented here tonight? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes. Next item on our agenda is item number 9, items for new business at the July 16th council. Nothing. And item number 10, the referral of communications to committees. Any referrals? We had talked about having a committee of the whole meeting this month. A number of the items got held, taken care of internally, so there was no need to have a committee of the whole this month. I'm not sure about next month at this point. Alder Person Young?
Well, Andrew Kirkpatrick, Alderman Kirkpatrick, was actually the one who wanted the committee of the whole, but he wasn't able to be here this evening, so if, Shane, if you would follow with him, because, again, my recommendation would be to hold it just prior to this meeting, since we all have this time scheduled aside, so.
There still is the item with the Airport Commission as well, related to governance structure, but wasn't really ready for it this month. Okay. Any further referrals? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you for being here this evening.